After each speaker, we will open the floor to the congresspeople by order of inscription. So that all the guests are in the environment of teleconference and they are. Stella Assange, wife of Julian Assange, John Chipton, father of Julian Assange, Gabriel Chipton, brother of Julian Assange, and Miss Renata Ávila, lawyer. I thank to all the guests by their presence. This is a topic absolutely important for the democracy. It's a topic that deserves the follow-up in all the planet. Myself, I was the author of a request for diplomatic representation to the British Embassy in Brazil, so we could appeal to the British government in a way of assuring the integrity and the permanence of Julian Assange in London. I do imagine that it's quite important that everyone here understand the vision of the kin of Julian Assange and of the lawyer that is defending Julian Assange. Considering previous commitments, I open the floor to Mr. John Chipton, father of Julian Assange. You have up to ten minutes, please.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for the excellent introduction and the generosity of the House of Congress to invite us to speak. Julian currently is waiting in Belmas prison for an appeal to go ahead to the High Court. That appeal will be heard in the near future. His circumstances continue to be onerous and his general being after thirteen years, his health is what I would call dire. Where we witness a person accused by the perpetrators of heinous crimes, accused of a crime, we again descend into an area of grotesquery. This calls forth from us a resistance and an insistence that we return to the rule of law. In Julian's case, the human rights legislation, the conventions of asylum, the regulations of due process and procedural irregularities have plagued every aspect of law in Julian's matter since 2010. That is all outlined by Professor Nils Melzer, professor of international law at the University of Glasgow and the International and the United Nations Rapporteur on Torture. His report is comprehensive and outlines for us all of the abrogations and degradation of law and due process in the treatment of Julian Assange over the last twelve years. Lastly, I would just like to address briefly the support that has grown around the world. Now, in Julian's country, Australia, the cross-parliamentary group in Parliament has thirty members or thirty-one members, and that will grow very soon as there's been an election. Also note that each organization, parliamentary organization, that stands for election on a platform of freedom for Julian Assange becomes successful in the electoral process, and that is illustrated in Australia, where the Green Movement elected on a platform of assistance to Julian Assange and a new party called Teal prevailed and doubled their representation. In the case of Teal, it started from zero and went to seven. That's the same in France, in their recent election for the House and Prime Ministership. The deputies that stood on a platform of assistance to Julian Assange and freedom for Julian Assange did very well. The same in the recent elections in Germany. So we see a circumstance of growing support around the world. In the Greek Parliament, there's three hundred members. Ninety of those members are in the Assange Friendship Group. The same in Norway, there's nine members in the Assange Friendship Group. Even in Sweden, we have a member of the Assange Friendship Group. Today, yesterday, sorry, the Bundestag just passed, the petitions committee just passed a petition, which is very important in their system, that Julian Assange ought to be freed and not sent extradited to the United States. In the Swedish, in the Swiss Federation, similar, in the Austrian government made a statement of support. The Council of Europe has made two very strong statements of support. One is recently, is two weeks ago, and the High Commissioner for Human Rights of the Council of Europe have equally made a statement that Julian is a protected journalist and must be freed. This phenomenon is around the world. The most notable was just yesterday, the President Obrador of Mexico stated clearly that should Julian be extradited to the United States, the Statue of Liberty must be disassembled, as there's no liberty left in the United States. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and I extend my appreciation and gratitude for this opportunity to speak to the parliamentary group.
Muito obrigado. Thank you very much, Mr. John Chipton. I thank you for your statement, and I open the floor immediately to Mr. Gabriel Chipton, brother of Julian Assange. You have up to ten minutes, please.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for convening this group. Very appreciative of all the support that is coming in from Brazil. And as John said, you will join by waves and waves of support for Julian and what Julian's case means for people around the world, from parliaments all around the world. As John said, Julian has lodged an application to appeal to the High Court in the UK. There is some new evidence that has made its way into the public since Julian's last hearing in the magistrate's court, and that is that the CIA was recording Julian's meetings with his lawyers, with his doctors inside the Ecuadorian Embassy, that there were plans from within the CIA to kidnap Julian, plans to poison him that emerged from within the CIA. The plans to kidnap him made it all the way to the Trump White House. This was all confirmed by an investigation by three Washington DC-based reporters who had thirty sources from within the intelligence community, both current and former intelligence community sources, who confirmed that these plots and these recordings were being sent back to the CIA. So this means that this case should be completely, you know, dropped immediately. It's similar to Daniel Ellsberg's case, who was the Pentagon Papers leaker, who had his psychiatrist spied on in the seventies. A judge throughout that case, and Julian's case should be thrown out similarly. I want to thank your ex-president, Lula da Silva, for his support. He has been a great champion of Julian's, and his statements have encouraged many around the world to join Julian's movement, and that's, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I thank you for your manifestation of Mr. Gabriel Chipton, and I open the floor now to Miss Stella Assange, wife of Julian Assange.
Good afternoon, and I thank you so much for having me and John and Gabriel be able to participate in such a distinguished place. It is really heartening for us that Julian's case is being raised, because the biggest threat to his life is that there is silence around his situation. And that's because this is a political case. The United Kingdom has a legal fiction. The UK legal processes have been set into motion, but really they are just an extension of what is clearly purely a political case. Being taken against a journalist because he published true information that was highly embarrassing to the US government, and the US government has used its outdated espionage laws in order to criminalize journalism, and it has taken an unprecedented case against a journalist. But I experience Julian's political persecution because he is a political prisoner. Personally, of course, because he is my husband, he is the father of my children, and I see him when I visit the prison that he is being kept in while the UK processes the extradition request by the United States. Julian has been in the harshest prison in the United Kingdom for the past three years, since the day of his arrest on the eleventh of April, 2019. And Julian's physical and mental health is deteriorating day by day. He is in a cell on his own. Sometimes he's able to go into the yard, but not for more than an hour, often less. And you can just imagine what it's like for him physically and mentally to be put in this situation year after year, knowing that this is a case that is politically motivated, that is a vindictive case, and that he is separated, physically separated, from his family, from his young children, who are three and five years old, and isolated, and having to be subjected to a brutal process in which his defense is deeply compromised, because, for example, he has no access to internet. Of course, his communications with his lawyers have to come in. Papers are sent into the prison. It takes about ten days for the legal papers from his lawyers, the draft arguments that are going into court with tight deadlines. It takes ten days for Julian to receive his own legal arguments. During the COVID period, he didn't see his lawyers for six months. And the first time he went, he saw his lawyers was in the courtroom on the first day of a four-week hearing, in which his life hangs in the balance. The US is bringing a case that carries a hundred and seventy-five-year prison sentence. So Julian is fighting for his life, and the US is threatening to put him in the deepest, darkest corner of the US prison system for the rest of his life. And so he's fighting this. After a year of asking, in 2020, mid-2020, the UK government finally gave him a computer for him to read his legal notes on, but the keys of the computer were glued down, and the text-editing software of the computer had been removed, so he's not able to type anything for his lawyers and he notes. And in October last year, Julian suffered a mini-stroke. So for people who might not have friends or family members in prison, it might be difficult to understand, but the parallelism that I use is animals in a zoo. If you keep a person in a cage for long enough, it will cut their life short, and they will die. And really, Julian is being silenced, he's being imprisoned, and if he's not released soon, his life is in severe danger. So the case is absolutely an attack on press freedom, on the ability to speak the truth. It is an attack on global media freedom, because Julian is an Australian citizen. He has nothing to do with the United States, except that he exposed US crimes. And for that, the United States wants to take him out of the United Kingdom, out of London, and put him in a US prison for the rest of his life. This is a threat to press freedom everywhere, because it becomes a new standard whereby no journalist is protected from the vindictive actions of the governments that they expose. But on a humanitarian level, on a very basic human level, Julian has suffered and is suffering every day. And he's a very strong person, but he's fighting for his life. And it is the recognition that this is a political case, that there has to be a political solution, that the United States has to see that the world is reacting and is showing its disgust of the political persecution against a man who all he did was publish the truth, was publish truths about the US government, including US military committing war crimes in Iraq and Afghanistan and interfering with foreign governments, foreign judicial processes, and so on. Julian has done nothing wrong. He did the right thing. As a journalist, he fulfilled his duty to inform the public, and he is being punished because of it. And he has not been a free man since the seventh of December, 2010, when he was arrested. There has been a vicious attack on his character in an attempt to reduce his political support. And that's why it's so important that we have these meetings in order to not only set the record straight, but to tell the world that Julian has to be freed, and if he's not freed, he will lose his life, and it's urgent.
Muito obrigado. Agradeço.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all the information provided and Mrs. Stella Assange's statements. Now, I will hand the floor for ten minutes to Miss Renata Ávila. She's a lawyer. She's a lawyer of the case.
Hello, Honored Deputies. As a Latin American, I'm honored to be before you speaking about this case. Latin America, as you know, has suffered from being denied the right to truth, from being denied the right to access information critical for our democracies and for our decisions. And you, in this commission, more than anyone know how in the past two decades, Latin America had been, and Brazil had been, avant-garde, had been like this progressive nation, nation, uncovering the truth of the past, opening archives, opening information about many, many atrocities that happened in our continent and in our countries, that helped us to shape the new constitutions and that helped us build better safeguards for democracy. This is what is at stake today. This is what we are fighting for. We are fighting for, not only for saving a heroic person, who's paying, one person paying for this right, that should be a right that any citizen anywhere in the world should have, the right to know the truth, the right to know and to understand beyond just, you know, like our communities, what's going on in the world. And the right to, once we know, activate the mechanisms of accountability to hold power accountable, no matter the flag, no matter the power a person is holding. There should not be impunity. There should not be a green card for the most powerful countries in the world to do whatever they want in just, you know, hidden places. What Julian uncovered, as this commission had heard many times, is wars that led to crimes against humanity. If we see our context, our global context today, is more than urgent, is necessary, is imperative, that as the powers around the world engage in new wars, that this right of a journalist, of a citizen, to expose the truth, to expose the truth to everybody, not just to selective rooms, closed rooms, but to everybody, is not attacked as a right, but revitalized. And what this case is about is the criminalization of our right to know. The criminalization of making a very confusing use of a law that belongs to the, you know, a law that is more than a hundred years old, to punish someone who's only advancing our rights. Basically, what's going on, I mean, you might not remember WikiLeaks, but I do remember Julian being very amazed and proud of Brazil, of the resilience of civil society, of the progressive politics, you know, creating frames for internet rights. He actually spoke before the meetings organized for Marco Civil. It is someone who has been engaged and who has been connected with your communities and who understands your country and had, like, you know, worked very, very, very hard to expose not only the cables, but mechanisms of surveillance that were affecting Brazil. It was someone actively and intensely involved in understanding better and assisting better and advancing the rights of Brazilians. Today is the time to reciprocate. Today is the time to keep a little back and elevate this case, because we are running out of time, and we know that the solution will not be on the courts. The solution will be, this is a political persecution. It's not a concept like a fair trial, absolutely out of the table. Me, as his friend and his lawyer, you know, I was spied on several times. All my conversations recorded. You know, like, how can we talk about fair trial if we have lawyers under surveillance, if we have everybody, like, you know, persecuted, if we have the press silenced? I invite you today to issue a statement, a strong statement, urging the international community to elevate this case and to put it at the top of the priorities. We cannot have more rights removed from us. And the right to know, know, and the right to truth is a right that is recognized by the Inter-American Court of Human Rights. It's a right that is recognized in many of our constitutions. It's a right that should be crystallized and strengthened. And the way to, if we have the most powerful country in the world executing, basically, it's an extrajudicial execution, what they are doing against Julian, killing him by process, killing him by the brutality of a process that shouldn't be. If we lose him, we lose big time, because we will not only lose one of the most visionary men that I have met in my life and that had revolutioned journalism and access to information forever, but we will lose our rights completely. We have seen the repression of rights, this trend. We do not want the United States and this Supreme Court of Justice, precisely now, to mess up with our right to know. They control most of the infrastructure for online publication. We should be aware of that. This precedent, the precedent of the Assange case, is going to change everything. As the world engages in new wars, the moment to set the record straight is now, and the moment for you to take a courageous step and elevate the voice to save Julian Assange is more important than ever. Brazil is one of the crucial global players that can make this situation change. I thank you, and I hope that I can explain, you know, answer questions and explain technicalities. Stella can do it as well, but the point is that please take the courageous step to elevate your voice for Julian Assange. Thank you.
Muito obrigado.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Miss Renata Ávila. There's a question made by a citizen here in the social media of the lower house of Brazil. Mr. Honri Corrinhos is asking, and I'm transmitting his question to the lawyer, if Miss Stella wishes to talk about it. The question is regarding what is the stage, the current stage of the funds that were offered to the United Kingdom law, the United Kingdom justice. Could you detail the, about the appeals, not the funds, the appeals that were done to the United Kingdom justice? What is the current stage?
I will let Stella answer that question, and then I can explain what we can do from our latitude.
So Julian is currently in the appeal to the High Court, which is the second level of courts. Above the High Court, there is the Supreme Court, but there is no obligation by the Supreme Court to hear an appeal. We think that it is a matter of months, not years, for Julian's, the final outcome and the end of the road is reached in the United Kingdom. Julian is appealing against the US on numerous grounds, including the ground that this case is politically motivated, that he is being accused of a political offense under the Espionage Act, that there is abuse of process by the United States in relation to, for example, the evidence that the US government has been spying on Julian's meetings with his lawyers, the fact that the CIA under President Trump, under Mike Pompeo, was planning the assassination of Julian, and several other grounds, some of which are more technical. If Julian loses this case in the United Kingdom, there is still the possibility of an appeal to the European Court of Human Rights. The problem is that the UK government is in the process of withdrawing or weakening its adherence to the European Court of Human Rights system, saying that the rulings of the European Court are not binding on the United Kingdom. And this is a proposal of a reform that is currently before Parliament and which the government wants. before Parliament and which the government wants to rush through um, over the coming months. So this obviously has, um, caused extreme concern to us, because for uh, years, we have thought that ultimately this case will probably end up in the European Court of Human Rights if the UK courts are unwilling to stop this extradition. And that ultimately the European courts are able to put a stop to it. However, now with the recent developments in the United Kingdom and this proposal to, to weaken the influence of the European Court, uh, that now seems, um, a lot more uncertain. And that even the ruling by the European Court may not put a stop to this travesty. So we are, um, that's where we are right now. We think it's a matter of just a few months now, uh, before there's a final outcome, uh, of the, of the UK, um, process.
I would like, yes, I would like. Yes, I would like to add, uh, to add to that, you know, like, yeah. Um, adding to that, uh, adding to that, uh, answer, like, you know, in plain.
Just a moment, please. I'd like to ask the interpreter to speak a little louder. It's a little hard to understand it here. Ms. Renata, floor is yours.
Obrigada, obrigada. Um, um, what I would like to highlight, uh, uh, to add on and more in the Latin American context and what we are used to, eh, in, in Latin American politics, you know, like, in plain terms, what Estela Assange explained is basically all courts can quickly say no, 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 no to all the legal requests. And then we will face a accelerated, I mean, the, the, the thing that don't understand with the Assange case is if to the, if to destroy him, they can delay the case forever. They do delay the case forever. We have seen it, like, you know, in many of the appeals in the past, taking forever, taking all the time to decide something and keeping him in uncertainty. But right now, we have a political situation that is very stressful, because they can really decide very, very, very soon to extradite him. And say simply no, refuse, like, you know, like, because, uh, because of the Brexit situation that leaves many loopholes and many open doors for even more arbitrary, eh, use of law, just of the law, basically pure lawfare. Uh, we can, we can face a situation. I mean, that's why this hearing is urgent. That's why this, this hearing is so necessary. We can face a situation when he, when simply the court decides, okay, in less than a month or two, to extradite him. What would be left? I mean, what would be left is, like, basically, we need to really scale up the pressure on the United States, because one, one decision over there can end everything and bring Julian back home to his family and his children. So, so that's why this hearing is so important. And that's why activate, we need to be ready to really act quickly to save Julian's life. I am very fearful of the effects, uh, that it could have in, in his, in, in him, on him, you know, like, uh, knowing that he would be extradited in such short notice. Imagine the, the feeling of, uh, in the, in, in, I mean, it, it is, it would be like, uh, extremely stressful situation when he cannot, like, you know, react rapidly while everybody in Europe is, uh, enjoying their summer, you know, while the press is distracted with different things. So I, I cannot stress enough how urgent political action, coordinated global solidarity and political action is, and how important the role of commissions of human rights, and especially of countries as relevant as Brazil, is to solve the situation.
Muito obrigado, Senhora Renata. Eu, eu respondo.
Much, Ms. Renata. I'd like to put in the record that we see in the presence of Congressmen Saldomora, that, that Congressperson Soraya Nebilisapana Guello, joining La Pancha. All members of the Commission of Human Rights and Minorities of the Chamber of the Chambers, the Lower House, also the Congressman Goberme Braga and other congresspeople who are present. Also, I'd like to say that Mr. Giovani de Pratia using the communication channels has the following position. It is key to have a public position of influential people, the greatest number possible of influential people of the Parliament, of international organizations, in defense of Julian's liberty. In face of this, I'd like to ask you, what are the concrete actions that we can carry out at international level for the liberty of his, this journalist? To ask Biden to reprim the accusations or press make pressure in the governments of Australia and UK to work against his extradition. What is the best way to follow? I would like to say that I could hand the floor to Estela or Renata if they can, if they want to say something. Because we have two questions. A journalist that is available, I mean, a Brazilian citizen that is available to to initiatives of journalists. I would like to say that there is a campaign in Brazil for the freedom of Julian Assange, and dozens of, uh, entities of civil society, social movements, they already mobilize, they carry out public, uh, manifestations, public debates for the world to know about the risks of freedom, uh, liberty. Uh, when, uh, we see that Julian Assange was, uh, in prison for fulfilling his professional role, providing information that are interesting for the American society and the global society, I would say. So Giovani, there is a campaign already. And we will respond to you in your channel, how you can access this campaign internationally, this international campaign. And we should be connected and be connected to this international campaign, to the freedom of Julian Assange. Uh, Ms. Estela or Ms. Renata, would like to, uh, yeah, provide a few remarks, uh, about this. No?
Yes, sure, sure, sure. Um, yes, uh, so there is many initiatives, you know, like, uh, coordinated by the different, uh, international organizations. I think that the best source for all, uh, I mean, usually, you know, compiling all uh, the information of campaigns and initiatives is, uh, usually in the WikiLeaks, uh, social media accounts. You can see there, like, usually contents, all the actions and all the ways to engage. Um, I think that also, I want to, I, I want to, uh, say that, uh, it's never enough. And I believe, I'm firm believer in decentralization and direct action. And this is, uh, is a mix, you know, of like the, uh, top, the top coordinated campaigns and also the work. I mean, you are a special people. You are like members of the Chamber of, of Deputies. And you have direct access, you have direct line with people who hold the keys of his freedom. Uh, I think that, uh, never wasting an occasion when you interact with a US representative is crucial. If, uh, I mean, one thing is, you know, like, the mobilization that we can have in the streets, but you have access to rooms that we don't have access to. You have access to people that we don't have access to. So if you mention this topic, if you mention the, the, how embarrassing is, how brutal it looks everywhere, uh, uh, that a person who only advanced the right to know and the right to access information is treated the way if you bring up the topic, and maybe you connect with progressive, uh, with progressive, with, with the people firmly believing in human rights in the United States in a position of power. Even, you know, even just, you know, like, the people coordinating the agenda. I think that we need to try to convey as many, uh, convey the message that the world is watching, and is watching with horror how, uh, journalists is killed slowly, how, uh, uh, one of the brightest minds in the world is killed slowly. So, uh, one day, like, one thing is that the organized campaigns that you can do is join and tweet and send messages and so on. But the other is the more sophisticated actions in your position of power that you can take.
Muito obrigado.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Renata, Ms. Estela. Final remarks, please?
Well, I, I second what, what Renata was saying. Use every forum possible, and, uh, I, um, I grew up with the, um, my parents were involved in the fights to, um, fight apartheid and, uh, free Nelson Mandela. And that took twenty-seven years. Julian has been incarcerated for twelve, and he will, uh, lose his life if this continues any longer. So the, uh, the movement to free Julian has to be comprehensive in every, uh, in every, uh, level, cultural, uh, intellectual, political. And the basic, uh, calculus of a political case, of course, is if it is more painful for the government to pursue this case or to drop it. And it has to become more painful for the United States to actually pursue this case than to have to withstand the embarrassment and the constant shaming by the world's community, by the citizens of the world and the people who, uh, fight for justice, raising this case and, uh, reminding the United States that it holds itself as a beacon for human rights. And that all this is just cynical talk unless it frees Julian. That is why, um, the, uh, statement by, uh, the, uh, Mexican president is so powerful. Return the Statue of Liberty to France, because the U- US does not stand for liberty as long as Julian Assange is pursued, is persecuted. And this is, I think, a very, uh, succinct way of, of thinking about it. And I think it's, uh, we need to reinforce this message in every, uh, possible forum every time until Julian is free.
Agradeço a senhora Estela Sanji. Agradeço a senhora Renata.
Thank you, Ms. Estela. I thank Ms. Renata Ávila. I thank to Mr. John Shippen, to Mr. Gabriel Shippen, to all that have participated in this public hearing. And I consider that it's now clear by the reports of the family members of Julian Assange that it's needed respect to human dignity in conditions that are suitable and proper as long as he is incarcerated. And I want to assume the commitment of sending as president of the Committee of Human Rights of the Congress of Brazil an appeal to the representation of the UK government to assure the dignified preso.
E ao mesmo tempo, apelar uma vez mais pela sua libertação, uma vez que, é, na verdade, um, um, um caso que tem um caráter político que me parece evidente, e expressa, é, um ataque à liberdade de imprensa. É curioso que alguns países colocam como paladinos, como os maiores protetores da democracia, da liberdade de expressão, da liberdade de imprensa, mas atuam no sentido.
Act in a way to restrict the liberty of press. It's very important, this manifestation, I will transmit to all my colleagues in the Congress, uh, in our lower house, the result of this meeting, and I will forward the the urge for, uh, liberty of Assange, and of course, dignified conditions for him. I'd like to thank again the participation of you all and the contribution that you all offered to this meeting. I would like to summon for the public hearing the priority for infants and adolescents that will happen at four PM in this plenary. Now I would like to end this present hearing. Thank you very much.